It is Monday, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. It is six thirty P. M. You are at a joint meeting, and I'm the mayor of Wausau, and I'd like to call the Wausau Common Council meeting to order.
And I'm the vice chair of the Marathon County Board, Chris Dickinson, and I would like to call the Marathon County Board of Supervisors to order as well. Moving on to item number two, pledge of allegiance to the flag, followed by a moment of silence and reflection. Please stand. Item number three, the reading of the notice.
A joint special meeting of the Marathon County Board of Supervisors, composed of thirty-eight members, and the City of Wausau Common Council, composed of eleven members, will convene at the UW Center for Civic Engagement, UWSP campus, six twenty-five Stewart Avenue, on Monday, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, at six thirty P. M. The agenda was duly signed and posted.
Thank you. Moving on to item number four, just make a request for the silencing of cell phones and other electronic devices, so as not to disturb the meeting. And moving on to item five, roll call.
We will start with Wausau Common Council roll call. Lucans, Martins, Killian, Neal, Gisselman, McElhaney, Rasmussen, Watson, Tierney, Larson, Henke. And Marathon County Board, Arsted, Boots, Conway, Cavelli, De Bru, Dickinson, Drebeck, Endress, Pfeifferk, Foot, Gibbs, Gisselman, Hagan, Hart, Hardinger, Hoppa, Jensen, Kroll, Kerth, Lemmer, Marshall, Mask, Morash, Opal, Poole, Radkey, Reynolds, Ritter, Robinson, Rosenberg, Shaneborn, Seifelt, Soibert, Sandelski, Angerer, Vol, Wilhelm, Zhang, and Mask. Supervisor Mask is present online. She may not be able to unmute herself. Thank you.
And I'd like to acknowledge, or we'd like to acknowledge, all of those who've joined us here today. I see some of our NGOs in the, in the front row, some of our partners in this unhoused space, as well as those watching live or on YouTube at some point to hear the report here for the, the homeless task force, Joint City-County Task Force, and it's, it's a truly great event here. Now, as far as I can tell, we haven't done this before, and nobody recalls it being done before, and a few people get to do two, two hats today, so welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, moving on then, item B, educational presentations and reports. Receive and discuss the report of the Joint Marathon County, City of Wausau Homelessness Task Force, and I would pass it off to the Chair of the Joint Homelessness Task Force, Ron Cavelli.
First, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight, especially the visitors that are interested in homelessness. I want to thank the city and, and the council for their work and their involvement in the task force, as well as the, the county board members. I'd also like to thank Chris and David back in the back for getting this all set up and everything working properly, so appreciate that. Homelessness is a very complex issue with many layers. There is no easy answer to solve this, as we found out on the task force over the past several months. And I'd like to, to first thank the task force, and to have the homeless task force members introduce themselves and give, give a little background on their expertise that allowed the task force to develop the direction for the city and council going forward. So, go ahead, Chief Barnes, if you want to start, or Sarah, go ahead, Sarah, you can, Sarah's a fill-in for co-chair McElhaney and Alder Killian.
So, hi, I'm Alder Sarah Watson. I'm from District Eight. I have an economics degree and a sociology degree, so I, I'm really invested in this whole housing thing. But yeah, I've been an alternate, so, and I have the joy of sitting up on the desk today.
Evening. My name's Matt Barnes. I'm the chief of the Wausau Police Department. I think I enjoy historical perspective and trying to understand the situation we're dealing with, because when I started as an officer, this wasn't much of an issue, and now as the chief of police, we are the lead organization, for the time being, in representing the city in this space. So, thank you all for being here.
I'm Vicki Tilka. I'm with North Central Healthcare, and I'm the Senior Director of Behavioral Health Services, and I was part of the task force because North Central Healthcare is the behavioral health provider for Marathon County.
I'm Craig Vincent with Bridge Street Mission. I've been in town for four years, and I'm representing the faith-based space that is working on this issue, and prior to coming to Wausau, I spent about forty years in similar situations in different cities around the country.
Good evening. I'm Diane Sunhols. I work for North Central Community Action Program. I'm in this space because we do have one program of ours that's dedicated to the homeless population. It serves ten households, but the majority of our work has always been in the low-income population. So, we provide a lot of housing programs to those folks, as well as services, so they don't become homeless.
I'm Bill Conway. I am county board with Ron Cavelli, Wausau Health and Human Services, and I work at Northern Valley Industries, which has been a nonprofit in the area for sixty years. I've been there a little over half of that time, and we serve the homelessness population with education, with, I'm sorry, employment.
All right. Thank you, task force. I'd also like to, to say a special thanks to Tracy Durante. I know she's here today for insight and contribution to the task force and, and her knowledge in dealing with many different scenarios on a day-to-day basis of homelessness. So, thank you, Tracy. And I'd like to thank all the great people and organizations that tackle homelessness every day. For those of you that don't know, there are many, many organizations in our area that deal with homelessness on a day-to-day basis. They're very valuable, and I want them to know that, and they're valuable in mitigating the struggles that people go through every day. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Barnes to kick us off with the history of where we started, and we'll walk through each aspect of the data collected that led us to this point. We will then open up for questions and comments from the governing bodies directed to the task force. So, Chief Barnes.
This is some people's nightmare, standing here with the lights on them, so we'll do our best. I will tell you that the history of homelessness in Wausau, as we put slides together, starts in two thousand, because that's when I got hired as a police officer and was a patrol officer, and, and I could speak to that. And so, what we really tried to put together was a history of homelessness in Wausau and the different initiatives or decisions that have been made to try and deal with some of the symptoms of homelessness and how it impacts our community. You know, I just want to start with, my first years as a patrol officer, I could tell you the name of every homeless person, because the number was low, and we had the Salvation Army in town, and they provided shelter services, and that was enough to be able to meet the demand for homelessness that existed. We didn't find people sleeping under bridges or in parks. It was, it was really a rarity to see that. And between the years of two thousand and ten and two thousand and thirteen, we started to find people underneath our bridges and in our parks, and, and recognizing that we had an unhoused population that wasn't appropriate to be staying at the Salvation Army, because at that time, there was an absolute sobriety rule that existed for them. And so, where do these people go, especially in the cold months? And that is a point in time in which Catholic charities stepped in. I'm fairly confident the year's two thousand and thirteen, as we tried to go back. And Catholic charities recognized that we didn't want people freezing to death in our parks and living outdoors in our climate between the months of November and May first is not, not acceptable. So, they provided the warming center, which had the opportunity for people to take showers, have some of their laundry done, and provide them with a safe, warm place to sleep. And then, moving forward, over the next several years, we really started to see behaviors associated with our unhoused population that were negatively impacting the quality of life in Wausau. And we had individuals with extreme levels of intoxication in our parks, and law enforcement starts receiving complaints on a daily basis regarding those behaviors. So, like, like any time there's a problem, we start addressing those symptoms and trying to come up with ordinances and make decisions to try and positively impact that. And the first one that we came up with, we, the city had just got done building the four-hundred block, which is really one of the gems of Wausau and Marathon County, and we had people at extreme levels of intoxication at all hours of the day there. So, the, the ordinance was changed regarding the four-hundred block to say, there's no consumption of alcohol prior to four o'clock P. M., with the exception of scheduled or authorized events, especially during the week. And we noticed we weren't receiving the complaints, and we didn't have people passed out or extremely intoxicated down on the four-hundred block. But we also recognized that when we take away a location for people to be and be consuming alcohol, that, that they move, and one of the places that they moved is a, a place we refer to as the gazebo in the Big Bull Falls Park.
We need to hear. They weren't different.
Moving a little bit further along, between the years of two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and nineteen, we recognized numerous individuals were using our parking ramps as shelter. At that time, the, the stairwells in our Jefferson Street ramp were heated, and, and it provided a, a place for people to be. And so, reactionary to that, the police department asks for an ordinance that allows us to remove people from being in our parking ramps. The police department received calls on a regular basis regarding individuals that are using the parking ramps to go to work and having to step over people and the different negative effects of that. And so, the city passed an ordinance that really protected officers, because if we were going to be removing people from the ramps, we needed a legal reason to be doing that, and the ordinance gave us that. So, then we allocated staff to try and ensure that the business community had a safe place to park and to be able to get to work. So, we pass an ordinance that says there's no loitering and, and sleeping or staying in, in the parking ramps. We start enforcing that, and where, what do we see as a result, as we make a decision to impact one thing, and we know we're going to get a, a result somewhere else, and we start to see a significant increase in encampments in our parks and underneath our bridges, as you can see illustrated here. People are sleeping outside, and they're choosing to sleep outside, even in the cold months. So, we fast-forward a little bit to two thousand and twenty-two, and one of the decisions that's made by the city is to really try and impact getting people housed. And, and the decision they make is to hire a community outreach specialist. Many of you, if not all of you, have heard from, at that time, she was Tracy Rieger, now she's Tracy Durante. But we, we were able to hire her to go out and do that street outreach work and work with people, and she's had tremendous success. I think it's fair to say that much of the initial success was things that I would call low-hanging fruit. We were identifying people that were unhoused but had an income, or were employed, or simple things that were preventing them from moving forward, like being able to get a new social security card, being able to get state I. D. and taking them to the DMV and helping them navigate what it takes to be able to do those things, or get a bank account set up. And, and there, there have been, I don't know, fifty, sixty, seventy individuals that, as a result of that work, have been housed. One of the lessons that not only did Tracy teach the police department, but our council and our city is, there's, you can't just paint with a broad brush that says, here's what, here's the pathway for any, someone that's homeless, because each of those individuals has their own story and their own needs in order to, to improve their situation in life. So, one of the challenges that the police department always faced, and at that point in time, Chief Bliven, and I was deputy chief, was a desire by many members of the community to say, get rid of the encampments. Just kick them out. And although we had ordinances and park rules in place that were enforceable, our moral compass doesn't allow us to kick someone out of a space where they're surviving, and when they ask the question, if I, if I can't be here, where can I be? And if the answer is nowhere, that's not something we felt comfortable asking our staff to do, and we wanted to be able to go home at the end of the day and still feel like we're the good guys. So, as we move forward, the City of Wausau chooses with ARPA dollars to fund three sixty-five shelter. And so, the City of Wausau contracted with Catholic charities to provide shelter in the six months outside of the normally provided shelter months that Catholic charities provided. So, the City of Wausau only picked up the tab for those six-month Catholic charities still funded, the six months that they had historically always provided. And so, that's what we do. We now have a place that we expect people to be. We expect them to utilize shelter, and by having shelter in place, we start enforcing park department rules and ordinances in regards to camping and hours that those individuals are allowed to be in our parks. One of the things that was in question during this period of time was, and it was before the Supreme Court, and we were waiting on a decision on, what can a municipality or a local government entity do in regards to removing people from public parks that are, are camping there? When, when looking at some of the decisions that they were, were making, we sought legal advice with our city attorney's office to develop a procedure for removing people from our parks, and that still is very doable, and that's what we do today. It, it is a fourteen-day process of posting encampments, giving notice, property of value is stored. If it's in a park, it's stored by the Parks Department. If it's on City of Wausau property, it's stored by our DPW, and, and notice is given on how to retrieve that property. But after that period of time, depending on what piece of property it's on, that entity comes in with the assistance of law enforcement, and we clean up the space, as well as remove any evidence of encampments. Continuing on, these are just some examples of the amount of staff it takes often to be able to clean up some of these, these spaces because of the garbage that is frequently associated with those encampments. One of the things that impacted us, and is not a judgment, is that in two thousand and twenty-four, the shelter options in Wausau were dramatically reduced, and that's when the Salvation Army changed their mission and focus in Wausau from providing shelter to individuals and switched to sheltering families. So, removing the opportunity for twenty-odd people to be sheltered on a given night, they, they now provide shelter services for up to three families at any given time. One of the lifebloods of Wausau is our, our downtown business community. We recognize that behaviors in our downtown, many of which are associated with the unhoused population, but not all, was creating a negative environment for those businesses and the quality of life downtown. So, in April of two thousand and twenty-four, the City of Wausau approved the acceptance of, number one, it approved utilizing some of their funding for a six-month period of time, and approved accepting the funding, outside funding, foundation funding, to assign two officers whose full-time job it is to police our downtown area, our parks, our library, and really focus on quality of life issues that are impacting the community, as well as, a part of their job description is connecting unhoused individuals or people whose behaviors are not consistent with the expectations of our community to resources. And one of the unexpected results of that is a partnership between our downtown officers and the diversion and deflection program that's run out of the district attorney's office. That has, has taken individuals who, instead of a law enforcement enforcement, has, has got them to resources that we've seen incredibly positive results. So, we're getting close to where we are today. So, we recognize that we need long-term stability in three sixty-five housing, and the City of Wausau approves funding using ARPA dollars for the years two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six to provide services to the unhoused community. The primary focus of that is to ensure stability in shelter services in Wausau three hundred and sixty-five days a year. In January, the City of Wausau funded day shelter services are discontinued, and that was our partnership with Catholic charities, where they stepped in when our first providers weren't able to provide that service. And the reality is, given the, the choice the city was making and funding, it, it put Catholic charities in a position where they couldn't staff a day shelter, and so, a decision was made to not, to not continue with day shelter, and, and Catholic charities removed themselves from providing day shelter. Many of you might recognize me because I was standing in front of you often with Administrator Leonard, and it's one of the things that I think brings us here today, is we're both the county board and the City of Wausau financially invested in providing those shelter services and getting three sixty-five shelter that we don't have to address every year, that we can have an organization that's providing that. And so, the county board votes to partner with the City of Wausau with matching dollars to be able to provide shelter services. Who's doing Parks and Rec? I am. Oh, I'm going to do Parks and Recreation for you. So, I'll, at the risk of, what's it? It's up to you. I mean, one of the things we'll do at the end, because when this, when this group concluded our work, the City of Wausau had not opened. We didn't have a solution for shelter services, and so, I'll cover that at the end. But if you want to do Parks and Rec.
So, one of the outcomes that we found is that homelessness is not solved, right? As you can tell, I think Chief Barnes said when he came in tonight, that I believe last night, there were fifty-one homeless that were in shelter. So, we know it's not solved. And then, the data that we've been collecting, we know that there are approximately, possibly up to four hundred individuals and families that do not have permanent housing or shelter, couch surfing, or staying with friends and family, or no shelter at all. So, some of the actions and initiatives of the City of Wausau and community partners was to improve many of, many of the impacts of homelessness in the community as possible, and, and if we can have that impact by partnering up between the city and the county and improve that situation. Many of the individuals experiencing homelessness deal with addiction and mental health and things like that, and to, to really, when they, when they're put in a situation where they, they might lose their job, or they, they can't find housing, affordable housing, as we all know is, is an issue, then the things just, just snowball and get, get worse. So, really, what we're looking for is how do we develop that program to have those services available and wraparound services with everybody? So, the mission statement was the Joint City of Wausau, Marathon County Government and Homelessness Task Force is dedicated to developing a shared strategy relative to the role of the City of Wausau and Marathon County governments in addressing the impacts of homelessness, homelessness in Wausau, and more broadly in Marathon County. This isn't just a Wausau problem. This is a county-wide problem for us. How do we define homelessness? You know, how many in Marathon County? It's difficult to measure. Like I said, there could be possibly up to four hundred that, that, that we could count, and Diane will be talking a little bit about this. We have community on-call numbers averaging fifty-two to fifty-three when they go out and do their, their counts. Unduplicated individuals per year between two and three hundred. That's a lot of people in Marathon County that are unhoused. And then, we have some links, if they're available. I tried earlier, and the link wasn't quite working, but we'll get that out to you if you need it. Some of this published documents have been gone over in previous board meetings, so that information is out there and available, and I'll give it over to Diane.
So, this is a chart that I did not get the data to put in here. So, this, I believe, came from Catholic charities.
Could you hold it closer to your box? It's really hard to hear your.
Yes. Sorry. Okay, so, I'm just, I want to clarify. I did not provide this data. I believe this came from Catholic charities. Typically, my agency uses HMS or Clarity. It's a database that we put all of our information into, and so, we can pull that information when needed to provide some reporting statistics. So, this just, from, from what I'm understanding, this just says how many people were turned away in the orange, and that was a count given by the volunteers who work or volunteer at Catholic charities. I'm not sure where those numbers came from, so I can't speak to that. The thirty where you see, that's their number of beds that they have available each night. Now, it looks like it was at maximum all the time, or a greater part of the time, but I know for a fact that it, it does vary. They were at capacity several, several months, but not always. So, this is just, this is just merely a depiction of what they're saying is the number of people turned away that, that they just don't, not have beds for, when you see those orange bars there. So, I just want to clarify a little bit on that. Employed and sheltered. Okay, so, I'm not familiar with this slide. I didn't see this So, Catholic charities does save beds for those who are employed, and they're typically employed at Northern Valley. That's my understanding. Not all, but most. So, this is, this is kind of a reward system for those who are working, and I, I think it's a good thing. I mean, if they're working towards sobriety, or they're working and they're employed, then they, that's, that's incentive for them to keep doing good, and it's incentive for them to have a bed at night.
Diane and I kind of serve together representing nonprofits, and we're going to tag-team a little bit here as, as we go. I'm going to focus first on what is happening in the community among the faith-based, faith-based nonprofits that serve the unhoused. And obviously, it's easiest to, for me to start talking about Bridge Street Mission, but basically, Bridge Street Mission has a day center and a meal outreach, and right now, our capacity at, is at forty-eight people, even though we're doing about ninety to a hundred and thirty meals a day. And in July, when we open our new facility at the old Pied Piper Plaza, that number will increase to about a hundred and twenty, our capacity. And so, we, we provide the day center and the meal. We also are currently operating a men's recovery center, which is which is designed as transitional to move people from homelessness back into productive members of society. And that capacity now is 32. But when we finish our renovations, that capacity will go from 32 to 40 men. And then we'll also have a wing for about 20 women. We already heard a little bit about Catholic charities. They're Good Shepherd Shelter, and they do something also that's called Beyond Shelter. And even though that they're not open right now, our understanding, our hope is that they're still gonna be doing the Warming Center November through April. Three other nonprofits that specifically serve the unhoused. And I do want to mention that there are churches that do things as well. We focus just on the nonprofits. But the Salvation Army, Chief Barnes already mentioned that they have their family shelter. But they also do a community lunch program. So there's somewhat of a day location for the unhoused community. And then the Hager House is for single mothers in crisis. And they do housing and programming, and that would be, again, a transitional program. And then Gospel TLC, which is located in Weston, is also a transitional housing program for men. So those five primary faith-based organizations that are functioning in our community. And I just kind of want to point out, because sometimes the question came up, well, should government be responsible for all the expense of caring for people? And the little bit of research that I did, I didn't get everybody's numbers, because, but three of the five responded to me. And that was over $1.5 million a year of private money that's going into addressing the needs of the unhoused. So the two, the other two that didn't respond, if they're similar, that's quite a chunk that's happening on a annual basis as far as investment in the unhoused community. Now, we also have nonprofits that are not faith-based, that are serving the unhoused community. And Diane and I are gonna really kind of tag-team this based on who knew better about those organizations. So Diane, you're first.
So the first one is obviously the agency I work for, North Central CAP. As before, I said that we have one housing program dedicated to 10 households that are chronically homeless and have a lot of issues. They have the highest amount of barriers. But we also have several other housing programs. We run Section 8, Tenant-Based Rental Assistance, which is like Section 8. We have, okay, sorry. Okay, so I'll start over, but I'll talk fast. So we have a permanent supportive housing, which houses 10 chronically homeless individuals. We do work with other agencies to help address their barriers. They do have the most barriers, and that's why it's called permanent supportive. But it is not by any stretch a permanent housing program. It's just a long-term program so they can get the services that they need and become stable and then move out of the housing. So we also have Tenant-Based Rental Assistance, which is like Section 8. We also run Section 8 up in Lincoln County. We have prevention programming, eviction prevention programming. So like I said, our, our goal is to really help the low-income population stay housed, address all of their barriers, get the case management that they need to become stronger in their housing stability and stay employed, basically. So that's what, that's what our agency does. The women's community is, is non-faith-based. They also provide a lot of programming for those who are victims of domestic violence or sexual assault, or human trafficking, those types of things. A wealth of help in our community. The Marathon County, this is where you want to talk.
So the next there is the Marathon County Community Outreach Task Force. Probably most known as the Marty Bus, and I think they're present with us in the audience today. But they are providing very basic needs to people, food, other items to help people who are living outside and survive. And I believe my discussions with them, they're usually serving 70, 80 people each time that they're, that they're open. They also have gotten involved is when, when people get housed, helping them set up their apartments. So they're all volunteer-led, and they mobilize a lot of volunteers in our community. The Open Door, although that was primarily set up for people coming, being released from prison and helping them get, get reestablished, it's not surprising that they end up serving the unhoused as well. So they're providing some of those initial resources of, of clothing and food and various things like that. And then back to you for the deflection.
Matt spoke a little bit about the deflection team, the Marathon County Deflection Team. This is, I think, a wonderful program, much like Drug Court, when you can get people to work towards their barriers, help their barriers, so they don't get charged, they don't have additional, I guess, items on their record. That's gonna be helpful for those folks moving forward. So the Marathon County Deflection Team, I'm not sure what their success rate is, but Matt said it was very good. That's a wonderful thing. Obviously, Matt can talk about the Wausau Police Community Liaison. That would be Tracy Durante. ADRC, you, y'all might not know that they really do provide a lot of support to the homeless population, whether it be coming out of the hospital or discharged from rehab, whether that's a physical rehab or an addiction rehab. They, they do provide a lot of services to our community. They're just, people just don't know about them. I know that Craig and I both talked a lot about this, and they're kind of swamped, I think, with a lot of people, but they also help younger population as well.
Yeah, we were very surprised to learn that the ADRC, then the group, the inclusion, and the Lakeland Care, who get the referrals, because many of the unhoused are age-eligible to be served. And then they've been very successful in getting people into housing. And then also, ADRC is also people who have a disability diagnosed, and a lot of, again, a lot of the unhoused population. So they played a much bigger role than we, we assumed going in. And then there were some county programs. I'm not sure how that ended up on our slide. But they're listed there. You, do you want to deal with this one?
Yeah. So North Central CAP works with social services for the Family Keys Program. And basically, that program helps in the reunification of families, whether it be both parents or a parent with their children who are overcoming their addiction or some other issues and social services involved. So we partner with their case managers, and we provide the housing component. We find the housing. We also case-manage the clients. That's been very, very successful. And I think it's because, you know, we're tag-teaming, you know, with their social services, case managers, and our case managers, and providing a wraparound service for these clients. So that's been a very successful program, and we're hoping that will continue. Let's see, what's next? Sober Living Programs, probably. You can talk about that, Vicki.
Do you want to wait till you get to your part there? Yes, okay. So then Communities Partners Campus, obviously, is interacting with the homeless population. And then, of course, you've got the justice system, and then their funding support, oh, through your agencies. So yeah, that, that, this slide caught us a little bit off guard. So we're gonna jump ahead to the gaps that we. And I, I guess the first thing I want to say is, I'm pretty impressed with how much is available in our community. And coming from other communities around the country, it's somewhat surprising how much a small community like Wausau has to serve people. And it's totally unusual for the police department to be playing this role when you see various different cities. So it's a shout-out to, to them, and we're very thankful that they take that role. So the gaps that we've come up with, though, as we went through, I'll kind of list them all, and if you want to comment on them afterwards, is that okay? Yeah, okay. So the one is that we found that short-term and long-term housing for those on a fixed income, that is probably not surprising for most of us. But then also, access to handicap accessible for disabled folks. So example, if somebody can only get an apartment on the second floor. Transitional housing for women is severely lacking, and that's one reason that, as Bridge Street Mission, we're attempting to, in part, meet those needs. But then also, safe and healthy housing opportunities for those with a background. And so this could be a criminal background, or this could be evictions. It just becomes very complicated where, when the landlords have kind of selection, they'll choose those who have less challenge, understandably so. But those opportunities are, are much harder to help people find. There are also some probation limitations restricting opportunities in other communities. And so people maybe who were in trouble in Wausau, but they don't live here, or they have family elsewhere that would take them or somewhere to be, but they can't leave yet because of their probation limitations. Housing or programming for those on the registry is a real big challenge. We have a lot of the people who are supervising and probation and parole that are just begging for places to put those folks. We also identified that, as you noticed from the slides, a number of the transitional housing programs were faith-based. So our community doesn't really have a neutral, non-faith-based transitional housing program. And then finally, which I, I think will be one of the big takeaways from this team, was that there needs to be coordinated management of a system that moves chronically homeless into housing. And we actually, the notes there in small print was the lacrosse model. And we had a presentation from, from that community where they had some success in coordinating. And that is something that we're lacking here in, in Wausau. So I believe that's the end of ours.
Okay, thank you. So this will be a similar theme, which is Marathon County does have a lot of resources. And at the same time, there's still gaps when we look at mental health and substance use disorder treatment. So starting with some data, this was published in Wisconsin Counties Association, based on a point-in-time count where people were self-identifying. 13% of adults experiencing homeless were fleeing or attempting to flee domestic or other violence. 23% had a persistent mental illness, and 13% had a substance use disorder. Definitely between studies and reporting, the estimates vary. At the end of the day, I think what we can say is if there is a successful program to address the unhoused population, it does need to contain an effective treatment program and adequate providers. So what we're gonna do in our few minutes here that I have is talk about our current service array that we have. We're gonna look at barriers and gaps, which are gonna include lack of providers and programming and Medicaid reimbursement. And then we're gonna look at recommendations for Path Forward. So Marathon County, as I mentioned before, is the government agency that works with Marathon County, Lincoln, and Langley as well, as the behavioral health side of our social services. So we are the agency who provides the mental health and substance use disorder treatment for the government, and we're largely funded by Medicaid. We also have many other community organizations, private organizations, that serve the same population. They might have a different funding mix, meaning that they might take commercial insurance more so than North Central Health Care does, because their overall mission isn't exactly the same as North Central Health Care's, which is to serve our most vulnerable population, despite the funding aspect of Medicaid or even ability to pay. So those, those programs also may have some community-based grants to assist them in taking the underserved population. Okay, so when we look at our treatment array, I'm focusing on, on North Central Health Care's programs primarily. But also, as I said, a lot of our private counseling agencies in the community have similar services in some cases. I didn't mention all of our counseling agencies, because there are a lot of them, and their services do vary over time, and I didn't want to get anything inaccurate or leave anyone out. So just to let you know that, again, we have numerous agencies that also provide the same level of service in some areas. One thing unique is North Central Health Care provides community treatment, which is a certification that North Central Health Care holds for Marathon, Lincoln, and Langley Counties, where we're providing case management in the community for people with mental health issues and substance use disorder who are in recovery. And they are working with our case managers to have a plan, that they set their goals, and the case managers largely meet with people in the community. Many of the people that they meet with can be unhoused at different times, or they're working with people to avoid them being unhoused. So definitely, there's an intersection there. North Central Health Care, as well as other clinics, has outpatient clinics for both therapy and psychiatry, which includes individual and group treatment options, including peer support, as we mentioned before. I realize that I neglected to put our sober living program in here. That was referenced in a previous slide. We do have a sober living home in Marathon County for males. We also then have our Lakeside Recovery, which is our medically monitored treatment, 28-day residential care for people who are in recovery with substance use disorder. And they will be at our facility, newly renovated, beautiful space, where they are going voluntarily for services and treatment. And for some people, they may wish to then move on to our sober living, for example, as a resource, or connect with our other services that we have on the community, in, in North Central Health Care, such as our outpatient or community treatment. We also are relatively unique in terms of human services delivery system in that we have two crisis stabilization facilities, one for youth and one for adult. So that's a lower level of care than our psychiatric hospital. People voluntarily go there when they, they need some assistance. They need a break from whatever is occurring in their life that is problematic. We tend to say that people are in crisis, but sometimes that is a struggle to understand what that really means. So I always say it's something's getting in the way of you living your life the way that you want to. And you can go to the crisis stabilization facility and receive support, be in groups, meet with social workers, that type of thing. It is not a hospital, so it does not have psychiatry oversight. We also partner with our sheriff's office and Wausau Police Department with our CART teams, that are Crisis Assessment Response Teams, where we have a crisis professional paired with a law enforcement officer and providing those mobile crisis services. And lastly, we have our behavioral health hospitals, again, one for youth and one for adult. This is the one area that, that's why there's an asterisk, that we do provide services to people involuntary as well as voluntary. So for people who meet a certain level of need, basically, you know, layman's term, they're a danger to themselves or others, there could be an emergency detention, and they would be required to be at the hospital for a period of time while their mental health is being assessed, and there can be a safe plan for them to discharge. About 52% of our people in our adult hospital are there voluntary, and about 48% are there on an emergency detention. I don't have enough hands to do all this. Okay, so we had, the Third Horizon did a needs assessment of our community as part of Marathon County's opioid settlement plan. So they commissioned that study. And there was some information here that I think is very relevant to our discussion today, which talks about why there is a shortage of programs in behavioral health. And it's because there's a shortage of providers. So, and at the time where there's an increased need also in behavioral health, right? There, there's more challenges that are occurring in our world. Probably ever since the pandemic, we can look at our numbers rising. So the, the need is higher, and the clinicians that are available to provide services in general is lower, which creates that gap. Rural areas in particularly have a gap of providers. Marathon County is still considered a rural area, even though we have Wausau, still considered rural. In the report, it states, for example, just one credential is our licensed clinical social workers. Then in 2024, there were about 50 per capita in Marathon County, and that is about 30% less than in Wisconsin overall, which has about 70% per capita. So when we have challenges recruiting people with credentials, that is, that is countywide, that is really Wisconsin-wide. And so that brings And so that brings us to a point where we're not always able to do our programs in the full manner where we would wish to because of our lack of clinicians. And again, that can impact availability of programs as well as timely access. There's a link to the actual paper that was written on this, that hopefully that link works, so we can check that out afterwards as well. So Medicaid, talk about Medicaid for a moment here, because as we're talking about what solutions are, North Central Health Care's main funding source for our vulnerable populations is Medicaid. And limitations to that is why some providers don't serve as many people under Medicaid, because the funding ratio isn't as strong in many cases as it is for commercial insurance. So that becomes important when we think about proposed federal cuts that are out there at this point, and looking at if Medicaid gets cut and North Central Health Care in terms of, and I shouldn't just say North Central Health Care, but that's what we're focusing on now, because we're the government entity here. But if we have a less reimbursement source to even continue what we're doing now in our various areas, that will be obviously a challenge for us for what we're doing currently, but let alone if we're going to talk further expansion, which is what this recommendation is going to allude to. So watching Medicaid services and what it funds will be really important for us moving forward. So what is our path forward? First of all, we need to understand that everyone with a mental health need or substance use disorder has their own path and their own story, just like we do. Being in this job for the last almost two and a half years, I've heard, I've heard many people ask questions or make comments about if we can just get this person in treatment immediately, like today, that will be the resolution. And I always ask people to pause and think through, because everyone has, again, their story, their path, their choice, their option. And helping people to avail themselves and become stable in their life is the best approach prior to receiving treatment where it will be successful. But we always have to look at where people are and how we can best engage them in service. And there is not one size fits all. So we want to understand the specific needs of the individuals that we are discussing, the specific people who are unhoused. That was one of the major lessons that I learned when La Crosse came to do the presentation to us, is that's what they did, which is helping them be successful in their five-year plan. Is literally, they found a way to get all the partners to be together at the table to talk about who is it that we are trying to assist? What level of care do they need? Do we have that service internally already? Do we need to create that service? That is just very smart, because otherwise, people just guess, oh, I think we need more, more long-term residential treatment. I think we need more psychiatry. I think we need more of this and that. And we don't want to invest where we shouldn't. So being specific about what it is that people need will really give us that path forward. So then we can look at, can we increase our existing array? Is it, I'm sorry, can we do it within our existing array of service? Is it just that people didn't know about that service? That they didn't have transportation to that service? What is it that's getting in the way of maximizing what we currently have? And then, if we can see, well, this doesn't exist, or it doesn't exist at the capacity we need, then that's where we could look at investing in new services. So that's really, I think, what the focus was that we wanted to put forward here. So what else will be needed? A more specific gap analysis, once we can determine what level of service the people that will avail themselves to service need, so that we can determine how that is provided and where. That will lead us to have that effective delivery model in place. And it will be contingent on availability of new resources, because in our existing world, if we had the resources to be providing services timely in an accessible way to every single person, we would be doing that, right? But we have a gap currently, and that's where we would need to be looking at what new resources may we need. And then in terms of other community agency support, you heard others talk about our amazing community and all the partners who do so much. And what I would say is if we truly are going to get a handle on addressing this as a population, that we really all will need to step up. And it really will take a community to move forward and help with all of the other pieces that help people actually get to be, avail themselves to treatment. So in summary, our path to success really starts with the community understanding that individuals who have a mental health or substance use disorder treatment are successful when they're the center of their own plan. They're deciding what it is that they need and when. Now, there's way to incentivize people and support them, certainly. But at the end of the day, if they can be in charge of their treatment plan, that's where we're going to have the best success. Everyone's path is different, and their level of readiness varies. And having people have the ability to meet their own basic needs, as was described in our presentation before, when it comes to food, housing, employment, all of those things are really essential for people to be in a mindset or a headspace to be able to then deal with an addiction issue they might have or a mental health issue. They have to have some predictability in their life in order to be successful with that. So again, effective treatment programs engage people at their optimal level of readiness and recognize that life-changing success comes from a comprehensive approach. Craig talked to that as well, is it's not just about treatment alone, it's about all of those other pieces of support that we build around people, so we can support them in their recovery journey.
All right, thank you, everyone. So so we know there's a mental health and substance use disorder in our community. And I think Vicki really laid it out really clear on what those gaps are for treatment in that analysis. So what do we do? So, short term, one of our goals was provide a recommendation to the city, Wausau, Marathon County governments, as to whether acquisition of the Annabelle Apartments housing complex should be pursued to ensure its preservation as a transitional housing asset. Unfortunately, prior to our first meeting, that Annabelle apartment complex was sold. So that was off the table. In the intermediate term, forty-five days, was to provide recommendation to the city of Wausau, Marathon County governments as to whether the demographic data gathered necessitates a development of a formal mechanism to engage surrounding municipalities relative to resource sharing. We identified that, and it's now on Administrator Leonard's work plan to engage the surrounding municipalities to close that gap. And then a motion to approve the direct, to direct the county administrator to work with the city to engage surrounding communities, which Administrator Leonard, if you have any questions about that, he can speak to that. And then exploring opportunities for businesses to contribute resources, expertise, and support to homelessness initiatives and report on the findings. And Bill, would you like to take this one?
Kind of hoping I'd be like, under the radar there. Sure, so or you want to advance it? There we go. Okay, so what we found a lot of times is getting someone housed is not the most trickiest part of getting someone off the street. Keeping them housed, a lot of times, is the hardest road that we have to travel. Landlords, understandably, don't want to deal with a lot of the things that come along with unhoused population. However, if they're given the tools that they need, we have a much higher success rate. So building the ongoing positive relationships with landlords, creating a landlord risk mitigation fund, that other Okay, so I spent a riveting week in Green Bay at the Wisconsin Balance of State Continuum of Care Conference on Homelessness. The anagram was this long. And one of the things a lot of areas are doing are having, basically, community donations. Go to a fund and have people that need it draw out of it. If they have landlords that have, you know, two or three times rent for like, you know, security deposit, first month rent, last month rent, kind of thing, and other departments like North Central CAP, if they're full, they can take advantage of that. Another one is providing training to landlords, because a lot of landlords, once they find out how probation and parole works, they're not as scared. Once they find out that someone, what all entails a Section Eight housing, they're not as scared, if they're employed, if they can stay employed. That gives them a much better chance of renting to someone that has had convictions before. The contractor network, a few areas have had success with that. Sometimes people, when they're unmedicated and have mental health issues, damage their properties. That is another barrier for a landlord. Having a rapid-response contractor that can come in and take care of that really does help. I mean, yes, they have insurance, but that's one more thing they don't have to worry about. Another thing that we've been seeing in the business community is what, basically, remember we've heard about the Marty Bus? And having people donate materials, food, that kind of thing, for people on that end of the spectrum. Leveraging business, okay, points of contact. So where the homeless congregate, there's generally businesses. There's quick trips, there's tobacco outlets, gas stations, that kind of thing. The people that work there generally know these folks. So, I'm sorry. Thank you. So they, giving them the tools to be able to help these people connect with services is very valuable, and it will save them from having to call the cops all the time and then having to deal with that. And then the final piece there is recruitment initiatives and having employment. So Northern Valley employs just over half of the people that are in the emergency shelter right now. And I know other businesses like Crystal Finishing, Wausau Homes, they also tap them, because there's a bit of a labor shortage, and everyone kind of knows that. So having the employers, businesses, there and available, and giving them the ability to hire someone and have the HR sort of mechanisms in place to deal with people that don't have an ID card, can't remember the social security number, all those kinds of things that are generally barriers, so. What can we do? So, like Craig said, government shouldn't be solving people's problems, but holding a series of facilitated conversations between employers and landlords and folks like that. That's something that we can easily do, and doesn't cost a dime. Ensuring that school and hospital social workers are connected to the housing and homeless systems. Also, doesn't cost us a dime. A lot of areas are using, and everyone has a name database system, and that really works really well to triage the various levels of difficulty people have with housing. La Crosse model uses that, as does Green Bay. And I don't want you to think like the Marathon County model is the same as the La Crosse model, because that's expensive. And we took good steps earlier by hiring Tracy, by working with the cops, having a better handle on these things. So we're not in the same boat as they are. So we're taking what we want, we're leaving what we don't, just like your salad bar. Back to you, Ron.
So our ninety-day progress, we learned about the support from nonprofits, faith-based organizations, and they reported on the services provided by local nonprofits, which were listed in the previous slide. As you can tell, there are a lot out there, a lot of services, a lot of nonprofits, both faith-based and non-faith-based. So short-term resolution was that funding for the homeless shelter services. And as the county board knows, that we passed that, not to help the city out with the short term. Some of the identified opportunities to maximize the effectiveness of the initiatives and to enhance the comprehensive support for those in need is that if you've watched the, and I really have to thank the city and the county of La Crosse for making the trip up here during one of our meetings to present pathways home to us and what that looked like. It took them over a year to develop that program. And when they presented it to us, they were just getting the ball rolling on it. So, and they saw a lot of good things happen, and they saw some things where they could improve on. So I encourage you to pull up that meeting that we had for the homelessness task force and listen to that presentation. So one of the recommendations that the homelessness task force came up with is to direct the county administrator to work with Wausau city staff by the end of first quarter 2026, to develop coordinated actionable items, or actionable long-term plan to reach a measurable goal of functional zero homeless population. So what does that mean, zero homeless, functional zero homeless population? That means when we identify that somebody's coming into homelessness, we need to transition them right away into a path forward to success to get out of homelessness. That means that we don't want to see them reoccurring into that cycle of homelessness month after month. So recommendation also was to direct the city, the Wausau city staff to work with county administrator by the end of first quarter 2026, to develop coordinated, actionable, long-term plan to reach a measurable goal of functional zero homelessness population. So I hope this presentation really helps clear up any misconceptions on homelessness in our area, and also shed some light on that it's not just a city of Wausau problem, but it's a county problem, and we need to partner up together to solve this issue. So thank you. And if there are any questions or comments to the task force from the Oh, you want to do those now? You want to do those now? Okay, we have a few more slides that Chief Barnes would like to present? If we could do that? I don't know, David or Chris?
So the last time I spoke to the county board, you had authorized the administrator to work with me and authorized funding for shelter services. Administrator Leonard and I worked together to produce an RFP. Many of the criteria in that RFP were discussed with the county board and with the city council. There were not any responses or proposals to that first publication of an RFP that were responsive to what we were asking for. So then a decision was made to put out a second RFP, but in the meantime, that left us effective May 1st without a shelter option in Wausau. And as you heard me discuss before, to be able to keep our parks encampment-free and do so where you get to go home and sleep at night, if we didn't have a shelter option, those two were in conflict with each other. The Wausau Police Department, some would say against our better judgment, and the running joke is that I said, how hard can it be? And I've learned that it's pretty hard, is that we determined that we would have the ability to open a short-term gap-filling shelter. And that gap was from May 1st through December 31st of this year. So on May 1st, we opened the WMC Shelter, which is the Wausau Marathon County Shelter. I recognize we're really creative. I don't know who's got the button, but they can hit it. Which is located at 903 Third Avenue. It's the First United Methodist Church of Wausau. It's their basement, it's 10,000 square feet. And that amount of space really allows us to be creative and provide some additional services. So it is currently staffed by City of Wausau employees. There's 24 hours of labor per day in order to run the shelter. People can start arriving at six o'clock at night, and they're to leave the shelter by eight o'clock in the morning. That allowed us to increase our capacity. And it also allowed us to meet something that we heard when meeting with unhoused individuals and looking at what our ideal shelter would be. And that was to separate the male and female sleeping quarters. shelter would be, and that was to separate the male and female sleeping quarters. One that I can see. Just a little bit of information about our grand total of 18 nights of shelter that we've provided so far. Eighty-five unduplicated individuals have utilized our shelter. And on any given night, our lowest population in shelter was 30, our highest was, I think, last night at 50 individuals staying in our shelter. Of that population, approximately 30% are female and 16% of those individuals are gainfully employed right now. So we talk about what does the future look like. I mentioned the first one didn't have a responsive proposal. The second one is published, it closes with a due date at the end of this month and those proposals will be opened in the first week of June by our Board of Public Works. I have one submission already. I don't know what it says because it's sealed in my office per the rules. But one of the things that we did hear from some providers was our timeline at which they wanted, we wanted people in our first proposal to be able to provide those services, was just too short for them to feel confident that they could put a proposal together and then meet those needs. So the idea that we are able to provide a gap and an opportunity for them to be able to ensure that they can do a good job in what they propose by us covering that eight months seems to have helped us to be able to receive some proposals. And so we're willing and able to operate that until December 31st of this year where hopefully we end up with a proposal that can be the long-term stable solution for that. And the ability to produce this shelter for these eight months wouldn't be obviously possible without Marathon County's contribution of dollars as well as the City of Wassa's contribution of dollars. And the next time you will likely hear from us is to talk about what that proposal looks like so that we can have stable shelter options 365 days a year in perpetuity or into the future. And one of the things that's very exciting for me is Catholic Charity still has the Warming Center. And I've often believed that a community that's providing these services, having more than one service provider in that space is definitely beneficial. And something that I think goes without saying for those of us working to be able to provide those shelter services, if it weren't for organizations, businesses, and the community, this wouldn't be possible. We have three employees, three eight-hour shifts a night that cover, but it requires anywhere between nine and 11 volunteers as well as organizations and individuals that provide a meal. And so I have a list to thank you since this is going to be on YouTube somewhere that I want to go through. First is all the volunteers and community members. We need more, but so far we haven't had a night where we don't have the help that we need. I want to thank Greby's, Furniture and Appliance Mart, numerous local restaurants, Abbey Bank, Covantage, People State Bank, The Home Depot, Incredible Bank, St. Andrew Lutheran Church, Dunkin' Donuts, Starbucks, and St. Vincent de Paul. So that's a long list of, and it wasn't me, I will tell you, Tracy Durante went out and she's braver than I am asking people for things. And so, for example, she went to Greby's and said, "We need a washer and dryer." And Greby's provided a washer and dryer. Tracy came to me and said, "We need a refrigerator." And then she went to Furniture and Appliance Mart and they delivered a brand-new refrigerator to our space to be able to use. So every time we have asked the community, this community, to help be able to provide this service, they have stepped up and allowed us to be successful for a grand total of 18 days. So I don't have any reason to believe we're not going to continue to be successful there, but it definitely wouldn't be without this community, its citizens, as well as these organizations and others. So I just wanted to publicly thank them. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Ron, do you want to?
Go ahead, I was just going to open it up the floor, but go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, so thank you, Ron. So questions and answers from our council persons and supervisors is that time here. I guess the way we can start is we'll start with the Marathon County Supervisor if they have a question and then alternate to the city council. So if there's someone who has a question? Supervisor Marash?
Am I on? Yes? Okay. Made a couple notes here, hold on. Thank you, everyone, for all of your work on this and Tracy and our community members with the Marty Bus, all everyone's efforts in this endeavor. A couple questions I have with the Salvation Army, you mentioned that they've gone to families and that they can take up to three families a night. How often, I would assume it's every night, that they're hosting the families? Are they the same families? Do they change? What is kind of the situation with that? Does anyone know?
There it's on. I can speak to that. Families are allowed to stay for a period of time. They generally connect the families to agencies like ours, North Central CAP, or St. Vinnie's. They connect with our agency because we have housing programs for families, but they connect with a lot of community partners to get those people housed and the services that they need. They're supposed to stay only like three or four months, sometimes they stay longer, but a lot of times they do move the families out rather quickly. But I will say that they're full most, yeah, every night.
Thank you. Next question is, we used to have a program called CATS, Keep Area Teens Safe, and that house unfortunately had to close. I know that for two instances personally, that there were two teenage girls that had no place to go. Do you know if we have any services specifically for teenagers that don't have any parental support or family support?
I don't know that we have any services for teenagers, but I do know that the CAP Agency down in Stevens Point, they have a youth shelter. And I will say that when CATS was open, most, the majority of the teens in that home were from out of county.
So I can just answer a little bit to that, which is if our staff are engaged with anyone who's a minor that's unhoused without a place to go, our first call is to Marathon County Social Services who will then facilitate. Like, the answer would never be, "Sorry, there's no place for you to be, sleep in the park or be outdoors." There's resources available to get them housed immediately and then address their future needs.
And then I was just curious, is Catholic Charity still running the Warming Shelter at the community partner campus? I may have misunderstood that.
Sure. Gary Veltes? Gary Veltes is in the room. He's their local director. And feel free to correct me from the audience if I'm wrong, but Catholic Charities is still here, they're still a partner in this community. As a matter of fact, right now, which is very much a giant assistance to us. We have one shower and one washer and one dryer in our Gap Shelter Services. And Catholic Charities recognized that need and they created an opportunity for people during the day to take showers and do laundry. And then they have committed to reopening their shelter, which was their original model for many years here, which is November through April. Did I get her? All right, I got a thumbs up.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Rears. Pick a choice. I have a question. There's got to be more children that are involved in homelessness. So all of these places, are they just adults? There's got to be more families. Am I...
Well, as pointed out, that right now the Salvation Army has transitioned to families only.
But that's three families.
Right. And then the Hager House does women with children. So they're able to address families as well.
I understand that, but they have a vetting process also with the Hager House. So these people that are on the streets now, these families, is there a place for them to go if the Salvation Army isn't open? I'm just concerned about the children that are attached to these adults.
So I would put that in the exact same, a very similar answer that I provided before, which is when our staff, which is a rare occurrence, are engaged with a family that has children, we find resources for them. The answer is never nothing that's available for them. I think one of the things that's a very true statement, I think you'd hear from either our Social Services Department that has a Family Keys program, which is actively involved in housing for families, is that when experiencing homelessness, the amount of work you're willing to do to get out of it depends on who you're doing it for. For some people, doing it for themselves is enough, but when you are responsible for children that you love, you're willing to work a lot harder. And so the speed at which individuals with children that they have custody of will work to leave homelessness definitely seems, that speed is a lot faster oftentimes than individuals. But I just want everyone to be comfortable that if our officers tonight deal with someone living out of a car with children with no place to go, we utilize our social services, our own resources that we have to deal with the immediacy, and then we connect them to resources. So it is not an issue that we're dealing with even on an infrequent basis, it's just not that often.
Thank you so much. And I also want to just thank the task force. What a huge thing to do and to bring this to our community and try to find, oh, here I am getting emotional again, just trying to find answers for these people because these are valued people and it's so important. So thank you for everything that you've done. I appreciate it.
I just want to add real quick to what Matt said. Typically, we work with social services too. I know Head Start people call us as well when they have a family that doesn't have any place to sleep and they have children. So we do help, we do help. I mean, all of us work together, but as Matt said, when families become homeless, they work extra hard to find housing. I mean, they reach out to their, to social services, to Head Start, those who work at Head Start, and they reach out to us. So there's a lot of help. And for those who are like 17 and going to be turning 18, I know that we have several of those folks housed in our TBRA rental housing program because once they turn 18, they can sign a lease, but before that, they can't sign a lease, can't enter a contract. So that's a, that is a, you know, a gap, but it's a very, very small gap.
Any council members? Supervisor Limer.
Thanks. First of all, thank you because this is a huge, huge task. It's close. It's a huge task and I appreciate all the work on this. I guess my, I'm confused though because this is so complicated. When we're talking about 365 shelter, that's emergency shelter, correct? So that is different than maybe the pathway to get people into stability, correct? So we really have to be able to coordinate a whole system-wide. And when I looked at these slides, which are wonderful, I didn't see the piece about transportation. Many of the employers don't really live or aren't here in Wassa where our bus system ends. And so I would hope that as this whole system is put together, somehow that transportation piece is addressed. And then I've been serving on the United Ways Housing Task Force, which I know Diane, you and Ben Lee have done some incredible advocating for affordable housing and that has to continue too because a lot of this presentation, I think, focused on maybe deficits within a person that causes them to become homeless and not necessarily the deficits in the system that don't allow people to get out of homelessness. And I think we need to wrap that all up in one big symphony of movement so that it can be a sustainable and a long-lasting change for our community, for all these people that are valuable to us. And then I just have one other question. I don't know if this can be answered by the administrator or not, but the intermediate goal, that was 45-day that says that the county administrator would, you know, reach out to other municipalities for cost share, for resource sharing, I guess I should say resource sharing. You know, as a Wassa resident, I am paying some taxes as a Wassa resident to this. And as a Marathon County, I'm paying some Marathon County taxes. So I feel like I'm happy to do it. I'm getting double taxed. And I'm just wondering what other counties who are bringing homeless people here for our wonderful services that we have, are they contributing or is there a plan to have them help us sustain this?
I can answer the first part about a plan, and that was our directive tonight, was to direct Administrator Leonard to develop that plan over the next 12 months to encompass all of those things you just talked about. And I know Supervisor Limer, you've been really close to this and I appreciate all of your feedback, I really do. So the second part, and I don't know if Administrator Leonard can talk about what the state is actually doing or might have been tasked with as far as other municipalities using our services.
Sure. The short answer to your question about whether other counties are contributing is no. Your Marathon County tax dollars generally stay here as do other counties stay there. But the broader question, you know, what does that perhaps look like for other municipalities, even other counties to, what, under what system can they avail themselves of these services? I think really is going to be addressed hopefully through the Attorney General's opinion that has been requested by the City of Eau Claire from Attorney General Josh Call because they're experiencing, like other communities, are experiencing a very similar thing as to what we're seeing here and what Chief Barnes has referenced before, which is municipalities taking their residents to the city to avail themselves of those services. So at this point, that Attorney General's opinion hasn't been released or I don't even know that we know there's going to be an Attorney General's opinion, but I also have a very competent lawyer sitting next to me who can start to look into those things as does the City of Wassa to look about, look at what legal mechanisms exist for either the city or county to potentially put some guardrails around what that might look like. I don't know, Matt, if you have any additional information?
Yeah, I think it's a very valid question. It's something we struggle with on a regular basis. If the question is, are other municipalities, people come to Wassa, unhoused individuals arrive in Wassa generally in one of three ways. They are either arriving on their own volition and took an oath to support the Constitution. Like, we don't have people at the county line saying, "Show me your papers." So people can come here if they choose to get here under their own power. Number two, we have organizations, sometimes government organizations, that are working to connect people to resources or to family or things that can help them, and that might be here. And then they're transported here to be connected to those resources and I really don't have a problem with that. What I struggle with is the treating, losing the humanity of treating people as a valued person and they're being treated as a human hot potato. And so the real-life example is another municipality in a marked squad car dropping off an unmedicated schizophrenic homeless woman at the Quick Trip on Grand Avenue at two o'clock in the morning and then driving as quickly as possible out of this jurisdiction and then being like, "It's your problem now, Wassa." Like, minus one issue for them dealing with and then it'd be, we were called within 20 minutes and spent two days addressing this woman's needs. So that does happen, there's not a mechanism to recoup any of those costs. And I think that's why you see the City of Eau Claire asking for an Attorney General's opinion and whether, what the legalities associated are. But I don't think there's an easy answer even for the Attorney General. So I'm not holding my breath that we get a real clear answer that tells us what we can or can't do. But I do think that an expectation of both of these organizations seated up in front of me is that the long-term strategic plan, address those questions and at least make recommendations for the policymakers to institute a policy and make some decisions from that standpoint.
Another thing just to add, you know, to build on what Chief Barnes referenced, you know, that experience of someone being transported to our community also isn't really in their long-term best interest, at least as I would characterize it based on my lived experience and what people have explained to me in terms of the successes we've seen. To put it a little differently, people are likely to be successful where they have long-term or significant ties to a particular community or something that... or something that they can draw upon during those times in need. And when you are from two hundred miles away and don't know anyone in the city of Wausau or Marathon County and you're not, this isn't a warm handoff situation where you're being transported to one of those many service providers that we have in, in our community, which there is a mechanism, mechanism in the statutes for that. It's the Chapter fifty-one system, the mental health system. That is commonplace. There's a clear mechanism for a receiving community to interact with the individual's home community to talk about, how do we make sure that the individual's getting the treatment in a venue that is likely to lead to their success? But to the chief's point, there's, I don't know if an Attorney General's opinion is going to come and I don't know what it's going to say because it is a very, it's an interesting challenge that communities like Eau Claire, Wausau, and others are facing. Like La Crosse has seen their population, their unhoused population increase substantially. I was just talking with someone from Stevens Point today and they're experiencing a similar kind of recent development. So more to come on that. I think certainly outside of the county, those challenges are harder. Earlier, it was last week, we had our municipality meeting through the Marathon County Economic Development Corporation, McDevco. And I brought up this issue and that one of the things that Chief Barnes and I would be doing with those municipalities is trying to engage in a conversation about what that might look like for communities to make sure that, one, they're aware of the resources that exist, but also that we have some mechanism to ensure that those resources are sustainable.
Alder Lukens.
Okay. Thank you so much. So the slide that mentions hold a series of facilitated conversations between community member, employers, landlords, et cetera. And then ensure school and hospital social workers are connected to the housing and homeless systems and understand the resources that are available for children, youth, and adults. Well, one, I very much echo what Supervisor Limer said earlier about the, the need for housing, more housing, that people that are struggling can afford. I'll just say I would really encourage long-term down the road in the strategic plan that educators, that it's not just social workers at schools are included in that because the plain fact is that there aren't enough social workers. There are not enough school social workers. There are not enough county social workers. There aren't. There haven't been and there aren't and, you know, not, this is not about, you know, I, I understand funding and all of that. But I can tell you firsthand that I know of some pretty, some, some pretty horrible situations that students are in and that don't have proper housing. And so there are other people that, you know, educators that are familiar. And, you know, even with the education situation being as it is, so there, that is, that is not helping either because, you know, with funding, et cetera, there will be less educators, more, you know, more children. And so this, this whole system, it's a, it's a larger system-wide issue. So just please, and please do, please know that, that it's a larger issue. Please do not just trust in contacting the social workers. And I'm, that is not a statement. I, I so respect and appreciate everything the social workers do, but they are overwhelmed and they can't possibly get to all. So I can assure you that there are students and there are children in some very undesirable situations right now that aren't maybe on the streets, but it's not good. So funding, you know, anything that can be done, conversations would be appreciated.
Alder Watson.
Okay. I just wondered if I could just say something really quick. So this is my third term as city council and I think this is amazing. Like being able to sit in the room with all of you folks, brainstorm. I think the task force did an amazing job. I was able to watch several of them. I know I'm an alternate up here on the stage, but I really appreciate everyone coming and putting so much effort and really coming to the table with everything. So I really appreciate the county board supervisors. Thank you so much. City council, I think this is on our mission. So I really appreciate everyone just coming and doing this. So thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Robinson.
Thank you. And thank you for all the work. I know it was a daunting task and appreciate the recommendations. I'm concerned about the, the threats in, in the process forward. I think we've done a good job of trying to address the issue of housing, the overnight housing. The concern that I have is relative to some of the wraparound services relative to crisis and behavioral health. And I, I just hope that when we leave, or shortly after we leave this meeting, that we have a process in place by which we will look at those issues. I'm particularly concerned about some of the cuts that may be coming to Medicaid and what implications that may be. And, and, you know, if we've got gaps right now in terms of resources and funding for them and we lack the staff, it likely won't get better. So I would hope that we could somehow, whether through the executive committee, develop a pathway in addition to the work that the administrator is doing to try to articulate what those needs are and how we might move toward addressing those, particularly as we're looking at the, the next year's budget. So I, I would hope that we, you know, accept the report, thank you for your service, but then let's not end the process, but rather have this be a chapter in the book on how we address this problem and figure out what those next steps will be and including additional gap analysis.
Supervisor Hoppe.
Thank you. I don't know if I am on. Yeah, I'm on. I always tend to be an advocate for the homeless. And all of you have done an amazing job putting everything together. I am so proud because you all know I was against this. And you just, you've really put things together. But I do have questions. One of them is when somebody comes to the shelter, they have to, I'm assuming, they have to fill out some kind of a registration form. You need to have some, some kind of information on them. Okay? My second thing is, when you have that information, does that go to the police? Because I have heard on the street that some people are afraid to come because if they have warrants out there, they don't want to be found. So, so is it going to be detrimental for them to go to a shelter and then their information given to the police so the police can come and arrest them? These are all just questions that, that I don't know how to go forward with that.
Sure. Can I answer that one before you get to the next one? So yes, nobody gets to come anonymously to the shelter. And yes, it's the police department shelter, so we get to see the information. No, our staff aren't going through that list every single day to try and figure out who has a warrant and who doesn't. That doesn't mean that we're going to allow someone that's dangerous to our community or that we've been working really hard at to arrest them for their felony warrants where they need to be held accountable. We're still the police department and we're going to do our job as well. But I would challenge the individuals that are afraid to utilize our facility because we're getting into the warm months and last night we had fifty people there. So that's a lot of people trusting to utilize our facility and have a safe place to be. So are there individuals that haven't been held accountable for their behaviors and they might not want to come there because it's the police department? Yes, that's the case. Have I been down there laughing and joking and spending time with members and they're like, "Who are you?" And then someone says, "That's the chief." And then they all think that's really funny that I'm there on a Friday night at ten o'clock. So I don't think every statement you made through my lens would be what our experience is. And I think the proof is in fifty people staying there last night because if they were afraid to be there, I mean, that's, that's thirty more than the average from twenty to thirty, twenty more than the average last year, right? We had capacity at Catholic Charities of thirty and we're doing fifty. So in a, in a warmer time of year. So I just think we're serving a tremendous number of people and the experience they're having is they're not getting arrested every day that they're there.
Okay. So what are the requirements for somebody to come in? They have to be sober and drug-free when they come in. Is that correct?
No, to both.
Can you explain for me?
I'm sorry?
Can you just explain that?
Yeah. I mean, we're not a no-barrier facility. There are certain levels of intoxication or impairment that would prevent someone from being safely staying there for the evening. But we're not doing drug tests nor having them PBT them to tell us what their level of intoxication is. So we're low barrier from the standpoint. We understand that a significant number of the population we're trying to serve have addiction issues and substance abuse issues. So restricting them from using shelter is counterproductive to what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay. And my last question, I think, is you have all these services, which I'm so grateful for. But if somebody is in the shelter, how do you hook them up? I mean, you're not going to have a representative from every service there every night, obviously. So the services are there. How do the people staying in the shelter get connected with these services?
Sure. I think, I think that's a great question. But I don't have a perfect answer for you because, to be honest with everyone, the, the real challenge was, we had three weeks to hire staff and open a shelter and be able to have a safe place for people to be. Our long-term goal is to work with our partners, which I know there's already work to be done, to have organizations that have some case management components to them, to connect every single person staying in shelter with a case manager who can learn what are their needs and what's their story, and also invite different providers from the community to come in. And they don't have to be there every day, but we have space set aside to be able to have providers of services be able to meet with individuals who are there to start connecting them to those services. Some of it is experimental and in the works, but we're looking at opportunities to partner with our community care paramedic, to partner with a psychiatrist in the community who's teaching at the, at the medical college to be able to come in and that potentially even be prescribing psych meds to individuals and be able to monitor them through the shelter. And we just think that if they're here at our shelter and we have the opportunity to connect them with those resources, but this is going to sound like an excuse, but we're eighteen days in and we're still figuring, trying to figure out how to get all the garbage picked up every day outside the church. This morning at seven o'clock, I filled a pickup truck full.
That's great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Smithson.
Thank you so much. I guess I want to start also, I guess, on behalf of our council with a message of gratitude, both for the work of the task force because this was a really heavy lift in a limited amount of time to do the fact finding, figure out where the gaps were. We know that there's a lot of work to do yet and there is no one easy solution. If there was, we would have already found it. But I also want to thank our counterparts at Marathon County for recognizing the need, for coming forward to help us partner fund the interim shelter operation. I've been around local government for a really long time, almost eighteen years. And this is the first time in that time span that I've been able to sit in a venue with both units of government together, talking, working to solve problems in a positive and proactive way. That's huge for us. I also think that Supervisor Robinson hit it right on the head when he said tonight is really more of a beginning than an end, that we can't leave and go home and forget where those gaps are. And we still need to figure out, like, as units of government, where we fit in filling those gaps and where we can lean on others to help us with that task. But this is a big deal. I think the fact that we all come together to work together and help one another and recognize that we have a regional situation that needs a regional solution, it, it's a big deal for us. And I am so grateful for everyone that has come together and really in the spirit of collaboration and problem solving, really worked hard on what we see happening here tonight. And I think it really does give me hope. I'm, I'm so glad that we were able to pull together quickly the WMC shelter. I hope that at the end of the year, if we can hand that off to a qualified nonprofit organization to take up that task, that we will have found that in that time, all of us working together have made an impact. Likely, we will find that lives have been saved. Likely, we will find that an impact has been made when people, when shelter guests are ready to get on a path to recovery and, and to sustain a recovery, that we're there with help and with resources. And I hope that they will find that that shelter is a place of hope and a place of help. And I said tonight in our Public Health and Safety Committee, I can't be grateful enough to the staff and community members who came together to make that shelter a reality in short order. But I also was asked by a media partner last week if I was okay with the police department running a shelter. And my answer to them was, I could not think of a better group of leaders to undertake that type of Herculean task in the timeframe they had and pull it together successfully. Every time we've come to them with a community problem, they've shown us time and again that they can not only problem solve, but they can analyze their efforts, adjust on the fly, make changes, recognize what works and what doesn't. Those things together are what's going to make at least our interim shelter successful and really, I think, help us going forward articulate what the rest of that work looks like. Because I think we're all clear-eyed in the fact that there is a lot of work yet to do. But I think working together, we, we will get there. And so I just, I wanted to really express my thanks just for the fact that we are all here tonight. Because at least for me, that's something that's not ever happened before. And I think that's the start of something really good. So thank you all.
Thank you. Alder Neal.
Thank you. Well, you know, it's quite an occasion tonight to, you know, have such a comprehensive look at, you know, the situation. You know, it's kind of a rarity, I think, to, to sit around and have this level of detail put out in front of us and in front of the public. But I, I want to hope that going forward, we are aware that it's kind of a moving target. It's a, it's a dynamic situation. At any given day, things might happen that will impact our efforts. So I would hope that there'd be some sort of mechanism to continuously, consistently communicate to the community changes, successes, challenges, to keep it in front of the people what's going on, how's it being addressed on a fairly consistent basis rather than, you know, just, you know, an event such as this, you know? It is something that I think that, you know, the public has, they make great demands of us. We, we see all kinds of things on social media. I would hope that, you know, in news media and in social media, an ongoing narrative about this effort is out there, updates, you know, negative and positive, to show that things are being done, challenges are, are being met, goals are being met or being missed. You know, I think we need to just keep that in front of the public rather than kind of go back to our jobs and, and now it's kind of out of sight, out of mind again in the public. Or they have misconceptions about what's going on. So I think that sort of communication strategy is really an important part of this from the public's point of view. So hope that happens. Thank you. Not to give anybody more work to do, but thank you.
Thank you for that comment. Alder Tierney. I apologize. Thank you. Supervisor Robinson. Supervisor Robinson?
First of all, I want to say thank you to the task force, who has done a marvelous job of working together and recognizing the needs that we have out there and coming up with a solution in the interim, especially Chief Barnes, who had very limited time to get a shelter together for the community, and, and did it. He, he did the impossible, really, with the time that he had, the money that he had to get three employees to man this, and then also went out and got partner communities to give what was needed as well. So as much as I'm grateful for the task, the task force and everything they did, I'm especially grateful for Chief Barnes for standing up, getting the shelter together, getting the volunteers that were needed. It's a lot to ask of an already very busy police department, so thank you very much, chief.
I'll make this really quick. I, I meant to start out my comment earlier, thanking you all also, because I'm deeply grateful, and so I didn't want to go with that unrecognized, Chief Barnes, you know, the rest of the task force, and again, like Alder Rasmussen said, that we could meet together and discuss this. We've been talking about, you know, this situation for a long time. So anyway, my deepest gratitude to you. Thank you.
Well, you're welcome, but I, I'm starting to feel guilty, because I'm really good at making decisions, and Tracy Durante is the one that did all the work, so I feel like I'm getting thanked for the work that he, she did, so she's outstanding.
This will be my last question. I asked a question during one of the task force meetings about the possibility of using any of the opioid settlement funds for any of our gaps in services. Did we find an answer to that question by chance? Thank you.
Yes. Short answer, no. Particularly housing was the thing we were looking at, and after considerable thought and examination, we did not feel comfortable with that as a proposed use.
Any further questions or comments? Supervisor Hoppa?
Just one quick comment. I think that our mayor should get a lot of credit for this, too. Nobody's happened to mention him. I think we're very fortunate to have a mayor that sincerely cares about the homeless in our community. I think he was one of them that initiated the whole thing. So I just want to thank you for that very much. Thanks.
Anything further? What I would then ask, is there anyone on the task force who has any additional comments to make? Supervisor Cavelli?
Thank you, Vice Chair Dickinson. And I, my final thoughts and, and comments on the whole situation that I've been through over the last several months, I did not realize that the amount of work that it takes for all of the nonprofits and all of the volunteers in the homelessness situation, how much time and effort it takes to manage all of that. And I would like to say that I, I really appreciate it, working with the task force on bringing to light all of the gaps that, that were created because of homelessness, and where we see the need for Administrator Leonard and the City of Wausau staff to work together to come up with a plan to cover the gaps that we've uncovered. So I really appreciate the efforts of both the, the city council and the county board in having the patience with the task force to, to gather all the data and to present the data, and I look forward to keeping the ga, the, the gas going, and the pedal on the gas, and the foot on the gas, and keeping that going, like Supervisor Robinson said, don't let up now, right? When we, the task force first started, one of my first comments was looking at the folks that were on the task force, and I said that we can do powerful things. We have the right people in the seats on the task force, and we can move mountains, and I think we're, we're on that path. So thank you.
Supervisor Gusselman, please.
Are we allowing public comment?
It is not agendized, so no. Supervisor Lemer?
Okay, since we are putting on the gas, my question, I'm a planner, want, I'd like to just know, how does the, I know quarter one of 2026 is when the plan would be due. Will there be interim reports, and if so, who, which committee would that come to? And when could we expect periodic updates, if, at all?
Yeah, and that's up to Administrator Leonard and city staff to determine, you know, how that, what that plan looks like, and I, I would expect that they would provide the updates as, as necessary and as needed, and as requested.
Thank you. No more questions and comments? It doesn't look like, thank you for the task force, I'm going to pass it over to the mayor for some comments.
Thank you. You know, what impresses me the most about this task force and, and the body we have before us is how many of you recognize the, the complexity of the issue. We heard about, Craig mentioned, it's a system of organizations, and it's, it requires a lot of cooperation. We have a symphony of movements. We have school district involvement. You have transportation considerations. So when Administrator Leonard and the chief were putting together the scope for the charter for this task force, it was difficult to scope it, to, to be able to do something within 100 days and within what our perceived budget was at the time. So we had to take it, you know, bite-sized piece, what was either low-hanging fruit or what was achievable, and it's understand, it's understood that it's a lot more comprehensive than, than maybe we were able to attack at, at this first go, but it is a significant accomplishment. And I believe it was back in, in July that the council asked for the committee of the whole. Administrator Leonard was there, several of the people at, at this, in this panel were there to, to speak to the issue, and I think one of the ideas that came up was the joint task force. So from there, you know, it was pretty, it seemed like it took a long time, but it, it really came together smoothly, and I think the end product is, is to be lauded, and I thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as a representative of the Marathon County Board, seeing that Chair Gibbs is not able to attend, what I would say is on behalf of the Marathon County Board of Supervisors, the Wausau City Council, I'd like to thank the Joint Homelessness Task Force for their diligent work and this very informative report that puts us on a path forward for next steps. I'd like to thank the Marathon County Board of Supervisors, Administrator Leonard, the Wausau City Alder Persons, and Mayor Denny, and also our departments and partners together who've been in attendance and not for their attentiveness, attentiveness to this issue. I'd also like to thank the visitors for your desire to learn more about homelessness in our county and municipalities. And finally, I'd like to thank the UW Center for Civic Engagement for hosting this meeting, I believe, and I think you would as well, it was time well spent. So thank you to everyone for that. So then, moving on to item C, miscellaneous business, are there any announcements and/or Seems like we have none, therefore we will move on to item C9, a move to adjourn. Mayor Denny?
First in, first out. Show of hands, motion to adjourn. All in favor, give us a hand. We're out of here for the council.
And for the county board, I would signify by saying, oh, I'm, I apologize, so, do you want to go back to city council on that?
Motion from Hanke, second from Neal. Sorry, I didn't announce that. And it looked like a unanimous vote. Mr. Neal?
I'll apologize for getting ahead of myself. You know, movement to adjourn, we get quick. So I'd be looking at the county board, looking for a motion to adjourn. You want me to call it? I'll say Supervisor Rosenberg with the motion, the second is going to be Supervisor Dubrue. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.